Good evening from every room. Welcome to our April session of our county commission. This time we're going to ask, if you will come and give our emergency management office a chance, we welcome our visitors tonight to the county commission meeting. Let everyone know that we do have bathrooms available at the end of this hall and they are handicapped accessible. There is no smoking on the property unless you're in your private vehicle. That's our policy for the courthouse, smoking in your private vehicle. Also, for those maybe visiting, if there is an emergency, we do have 911, so call 911 for an emergency. And also, if we do have a fire drill, everyone in here is to exit out the hall towards the monument to the back parking lot. The fire department wants everyone to exit to the back parking lot because they're through the front and parking in the front, they don't want nobody in the front of the courthouse. So if we do have a fire drill, everybody is to go to the back parking lot.
Thanks Brad.
This time I have approval of the agenda. Motion for Senate. motion approved by Mr. Mike Hill, second by Mr. Greenstein. Any discussion, any addition, any deletion? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. This time we're going to have our opening prayer with me then by Commissioner Campbell. I ask you to stand and then we'll have to pledge allegiance. Mr. Campbell.
I'm very impressed by God's Lord and our heads approach of Christ today. Lord, thank you, Lord. If you give us another chance, Lord, put our feet to the floor, take another breath, Lord, knowing, Lord, that we can do nothing without you. But, Lord, your word says that we can do all things through Christ who strengthens us. Lord, tonight we do pray, Lord, for the ones that are sick, Lord, within our body here, Lord. Pray, God, that you text them in a special way, that one and upon God, you know what's wrong with them. Lord, we do know that our Sunday is approaching, Lord. Lord, we know that your rose that third day, because we know we live within our hearts, God. Lord, we could never praise you enough for what you've done for each one of us, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for that unchanging hand, God. Lord, today we do pray, Lord, for our president, the leaders of our country, God, and down through our county, our local government, God, we pray for them. Lord, we pray, whatever's the decision that we make, we seek you first, Lord. God, we ask these things in your blessed and holy name. Amen.
You would join me in the place of allegiance. Ancient salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our time I want to draw your attention to, as you notice, we have three absent in our commission ranks. Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Trivik, and our chair commissioner and chairman of lines. All three of our medical issues. And I know that Commissioner Vaughn Cannon tomorrow goes in for medical figure also. So if you will remember them in your daily walk. It's trying and it's hard and unbelievable that you can sit in the chair for as long as you have and then first time you miss a meeting, your mind goes rampant, well, at least you forget that you're sick for a minute, get your thing, walk into some place. But anyhow, if you get an opportunity, I spoke with the chairman of lines. His surgery had on his eyes and all has developed greatly. He has a scheduled time for his surgery, which is in the last week of May. I think one time this past week, Commissioner Richardson was hospitalized and I understand it by a fellow member in the court that Ronnie Trivik got out of the hospital yesterday. And for myself, my surgery is scheduled for 14th of May. So please keep us all informed, we use them daily. Next item on our agenda, we want to recognize our elected and appointed officials, if you are present, please stand and be recognized. Next item is acceptance of the march of commission meeting committee. Motion to approve. I have a motion by Mike Hill, I say the Commissioner Hill, sorry, who is second. Do I have any discussion? Mr. Hill.
Just a couple corrections on page 554. Second paragraph at the bottom. I think it should be holder instead of holder two different times and have one paragraph. That's all I have.
Is there any other?
I have the page for 570. About midway then, the third option going forward, desired, third alternative could be elected by the commission. Who would, Scott, ideologically, I think that'd be automatically. And there could have been a Freudian slip there, but automatically. It's on page 570, above or above the motion, middle of the page.
Above the motion, where do you have the motion? Is there any other? Okay, Commissioner Mike Hill, in your motion to accept, during your second, you said those findings in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you asked. Nothing else, go ahead and vote. Bill, above. Passes next big approval for the number of bonds.
Motion to approve.
Have the motion to approve second. Your motion is as in your package list.
Go ahead and read it, go ahead.
Thank you, pardon.
If you want to do it, go ahead.
I have a motion.
Okay.
Anna Anne Pierce, Penny Blitzen, Melanie Keller, Elaine Fair, David Ella Oller, Theresa McKinney, Lori Hutchins, Regina Shepherd, Shelby F. Medier, Reba Gaylin, Larrabee Perkins, Janessa Ann Freeman, Tracy Lewis Scott, Stacy Dowling, Cindy Y. Weimer, Wanda H. Apers, Amanda Green, Jennifer Mace, Dana Popoff, and not entered under packet is Caitlin Bruce Burchfield.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion approved, that's second. Second for Mr. Blitzen. Any comments, discussion? Motion passed. This time we come to the time of our other comments. Anyone who wishes to speak will approach the podium. You must please state your name clearly and you have five minutes to address whatever you want to say for the commission. Anyone who wishes to speak, now.
My name is Elizabeth Whitby and I live on Hampton Creek Road in Royal Mountain. We've had issues with T-Berry Road before in the past and the issue was just getting worse. I recently, me and my husband, have found four dead dogs shot and in the kennel and dumped. There's still a dead cattle in them there and there's tons of trash that been illegally dumped. I would like to see if we can maybe solve this problem that we have, maybe give some action to it. Yeah. But maybe possibly shut the road to the public, the general public, get the area cleaned up. I'm not sure what we could possibly do, but I'd like to see something come of it.
Do you live close by?
Basically in my front yard.
You live on Hampton Creek side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there anyone else who wish to come before the commission?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This past week, I had the opportunity of being in the company for three attorneys at one time. So I just asked them a question. I said, "Do you care if I ask you a question?" And they said, "Absolutely not." I said, "Well, it's kind of simple, I think." But I said, "Could you explain to me, all three of you, what your opinion is, what a point of order is?" And they said, "Well, what do you mean?" I said, "Well, like in the commission meeting." They said, "Well, they're there under proper rules of order." I said, "Well, that's our assumption." They said, "Well," said, "that means when you call for a point of order, the meeting's out of control." Said, "It needs to get back in control and you need to continue on the subject you was on and finish your business." I kind of laughed, they said, "What's funny?" I said, "Well, in County law," I said, "we did it now." I said, "A point of order, it means call the road." And I said, "Then you, chairman of the commission," that's the first thing he says, "call the road." I said, "They're all mixed up, confused, have no clue what they're doing and that's the next thing." And I said, "That evidently, and you can watch them." I said, "The majority of them are, they vote yes." I said, "Have no clue what they voted on or anything." And they said, "Well, is that the end of it?" I said, "Yeah, seems to be so far." They said, "Well," said, "you have an attorney?" I said, "Who, hell, yeah." They said, "He don't say nothing?" I said, "Not yet." So, you know, but it's something's wrong with this picture. When people out here that's supposed to have some ability to understand some of these rules and stuff, and like I said, you just get into County law and it goes the other way. But anyway, that's what I found out about it. It's supposed to be that you get your meeting back in order and you continue with the business at hand. But when you get into the County law, it goes the other way. It seems like it's just a code, said they call the road and then everybody votes yes and have no clue what you voted for. They said, "Well, they did the budget that way." I said, "They do everything that way. They only have one reading on budget." And I said, "That way you don't know, you don't have an opportunity to look at it." Whatever, when they get off the views, that's the way it goes. I said, "That's the end of it." But anyway, this deal on the animal shelter, I talked to somebody that asked me, said, "Well," said, "did they get this thing inspected?" I said, "Well, I don't know." They said, "Well," said, "my understanding, the city's in on it." I said, "Yeah, they're supposed to be in half, but the county pays two-thirds of the money." I said, "Then you would think if they had an inspection, they would both be on the inspection side at the time, where they'd both know what's going on." Now, I said, "Evidently, this is not happening." But it's my understanding, now the city inspected your animal shelter. Now, they should have called in, in my opinion, they should have called in the engineers, the architects, and everything else, based stuff's wrong, they need to find out who made the mistake. Not try to pack it off on somebody else, somebody down the road. But anyway, you can kind of make your own determination on it, but somebody needs to make some kind of ruling on it. Because I know the counties supposedly only pays, they pay two-thirds, I believe it is, or three-quarters, and the city pays the rest, which I guess that's the way they equal it out, they say because of the population or something. But anyway, ladies and gentlemen, think about that a little bit, but that's what, that's what the story is up to now. When we get up here and talk, we try to be sure that we know what we're talking about first and know the answer before we do any talking. And, you know, these ladies and gentlemen's taxpayers and stuff, they don't seem to have a clue what's going on unless you tell them or they understand it. But anyways, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate it.
I got a quick, very quick. Can you hear the button?
A point of order.
I want you to change the chair for a quick.
It's point of order. This ain't a question.
Hang on. I, Mr. Blitzen, I have a point of order, do you think you want to order, sir?
It's not a question and answer.
You're exactly right. My other side. Mr. Blitzen, it's not a point of question and answer for commissioners during the comment. If you want to reserve your comment for a time designated on our agenda for Commissioner to speak, please use the pen. Thank you, Mr. Blitzen.
Thank you, sir. Back to looking at the table.
It's a question.
I believe that's how it works.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of agent of record and broker for health insurance. This time I want to ask Commissioner Garland, if he would come and take the chair of the time to be making the decisions for the management of the commission. All right, this time I'll recognize Brad Johnson on the next item, the approval of agent of record and broker for health insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The financial management committee, and as I will give a little bit of history before we begin to meet other, the financial management committee consists of officers that, I will say, is direct supervision and over our departments, more than 95% of our employees. Our main objective is to fund the management department. They selected an agent of record for broker for health insurance that was several things of great importance that we seen. Number one, during the month, the previous months, we had several agencies come in and make presentation on insurance and benefits for the budget committee, for financial management, and for other commissioners who chose to spend their time to get a little bit more involved. Some of the things that they were very serious and looked at the office holders in our committee was, number one, you realize that our cost of insurance is extremely high, particularly when we look at the wages that our employees make and what it costs them to insure. Now that I think, the last county I had that was only two families in our county, employees that were insured, no dependents whatsoever. So those were some of our main marks, we wanted to see what we could do to help. That part of the history is, in the beginning of the month of January, we were all told, I will say by mouth, that our insurance looked like we could look for a budget year somewhere around about 13.4% increase of our health insurance for our employees over the previous year. In the month of March, the beginning of March, all of a sudden comes in, "Well, they have negotiated and now it is 8% or 7."
7.5.
7.5.
8%.
Exactly. Then the financial management group placed an RFP to go out to other agencies to submit requests for packages to look, see what they could do to help us in our insurance program. Dave, for sure, we're facing the same problem that everybody else in other counties. Our total state, even our Congress has been invaded. The change of medical has just changed in the past year. As you know from your experience, that the cost of insurance was governed by the amount of claims of major medical then, particularly the cost of surgeries because they were so high. Now, surgeries are taking the second seat. The cost of pharmaceuticals, the prescription drugs now goes more than what the surgeries are doing. And also our nation and all of the other agencies are facing that and are fighting it and are trying to come up with a clause where they can level it out before it, it's not strapped on the back of the common people of our nation. In the process, we got six firms that requested and notified us that they would be presenting our information to the financial management. I can say the financial management committee had been five, eight days this past month to review these six packages of the RFP. There were 43 questions that were submitted that the RFP was then to address and to give us the background on where we can evaluate. Of those 43 questions, it came down to where there was eight prime categories. Of those eight categories, the committee broke it down to where six of the eight would be graded because they were of the greatest importance to make sure that what we are asking for, that could be right. Now, the next thing we'll do, I want to spell the rumor mill. I do reference of elected official that ran off the map to tell certain employees that we were required for a purpose of reducing benefits. Others from the truth. We have no authority to reduce benefits. There was never recommended to reduce our benefits. Our insurance stands as it is right now. The things that we wanted to do in the financial management was is to improve our insurance, to give our employees the opportunity to make their choices. For right now, you have one policy, everybody is the same. But you know that there's no two employees the same that it comes down to insurance departments. So now, whoever the agent is, the broker is going to be, the same requirements will be in place for them. For one is, we want to make sure that they have an offer to our employee for their spouse or their dependents. There's also going to be different levels of insurance that they have the opportunity to select themselves. It may be at a reduced rate because they may be of the young age who have no health history, has no problem, and feel that they may be paying more for insurance than what they would ever use, but still give the employee the option, okay? From the presentations of the insurance, of the brokers that came in here, it was an eye on, number one is, for those that attended, the different opportunities and services rendered by them and provided to this county if they were the broker, has never been heard on this floor, not in my town. And I'm sure it's going to be the same for you all. And it's at no cost. There was a lot of features that they offered that we've never heard of. And it's things that affects the benefits of our employees and us a lot, and also the cost of our insurance. Presently right now, there is no insurance increase, it is at zero. Regardless of what we do here tonight, we will be insured at the end of the year if we cannot come to a determination and at no additional cost in our budget, which is a.
At some work rate of what, $170,000?
Is it $140,000? About $140,000, what the 8% represents, so that at zero is a pretty good savings to not have to confront the other one with the budget.
Actually, the insurance brokers, they can't guarantee the rate right now till they come to become our agent of record, they can go out and get quotes, but I would assume there would be no increase, especially since the existing broker came into the interviews stating he got the zero increase.
Scott got the zero from the interview of our current broker, which told us in the interview that they would leave the zero, so I guess a assumption on my part that we made the zero. But the broker serves itself as one that works for us in the county, set down by our departments and standards for what they go in toward the insurance carrier to negotiate for the price for our health insurance. Out of the six companies or firms that submitted their packages, the evaluation system of the committee, known as the Rubik's system, where the six critical parts of the eight sections was evaluated and points were assessed for each one of those sections per the study of each of the six people who submitted them. At the end of that, the points were accumulated and the top three in the point getting were agreed, were invited back for an interview before the financial manager at the next week. The same system was still on the assessment of the three that were remaining. Out of the three remaining, the top company to get the most in score and to select was the support group, which is out of Los Angeles, Tennessee. At this time, I would like to place the motion on the floor that we appoint the support group as our agent of record and broker for our health insurance.
Mr. Chairman. Second. All right, motion on the floor, but Mr. Johnson's second, but Mike Hill is there discussing on the matter. You're not going to have to call for the vote, please. All eyes, motion carries. Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'll turn it back over to you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Garde. This time, I want our agenda is our mayor's report. Mayor Garde.
I've got a couple things to be very brief. As always, I want to thank everybody for your dedication to this county and our employees. Thank all those. And you packed it with the autopsy's. We're coming with copies now. March had four. Next time I need, one more question about viewing or something like that. But I mean, you've got views, but I don't know if that's counted. If you have a view, for sure that we're not up to date. As of today, we're up to 14 in terms of years, so I don't think that's a far on that. Got good news on our drywall project. Got approved for $363,750 for the drywall project. We're hoping to start soon with the, I guess, the bids and stuff, but first utility will come 121,250, so. Drive-in project. Next up was the joint economic board that we have. We've got some cards sent off, it's a tax ID number. We're chartered now, so we can do anything we need to do as far as accepting money or whatever we need to do. And throughout next meeting, we have a change in the bylaws, so there's more people, more our people involved, some cities involved. That'll be coming up. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Monday, maybe 6 to 12 o'clock, I'm out. And we'll go to the, it's Carter County tomorrow. Tuesday, April 25th, Wednesday, June 5th, it's Carter County tomorrow. Wednesday, June 25th, I'm June, Wednesday, June 5th, 12 o'clock at the, we're 40,000 we're going. I'll be moving that meeting and see where we're at. We're getting closer to the dissolve, so that's in the making. And I would advise you that too, that, you know, Washington County and Southern County had a big meeting here a while back. I probably sunk the meeting, but I don't know what it was, it was just a big meeting in the air. So I thought it was time for us, and it wasn't my idea, it was Commissioner's idea, is we might need to get up the people of our side, so I've got a meeting scheduled on April 24th with the mayor from Union Ford and the mayor from Johnson County, so we can see if we can kind of, we won't be done a lot much, we're not going to work with that, but, you know, we're going to start working, including Johnson County and Union Ford County, and where we can work together at the regional level, so that's all I've got. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
This time, we'll start the committee reports, first on the bat, Commissioner Garde, the chair of the budget committee.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll start out with that, because I've been really short, just to report on it. Ms. Vicki, have you got anything real fast? All I will say is, I know the Soil Conservation District, they had a, they can get together over Saturday, over the weekend, and they recognized Ms. Kathleen Wilson, who was our extension agent, and Emily Pardon for each agent for their services to the county. So well-deserved honors for those ladies. They do a great job for us, and the plant auction this Saturday, the Sycamore Show as well. I'm sure it's a successful event, I didn't get to make that, it's always a good event. So that's all I have for agriculture. Any questions or anything? Do not move on to the budget. And I need to apologize, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Blevins.
I've got a question, forget it, folks. We never got our package on this budget until today. We don't have time to go over it. I understand they were dead, in fact, but I think, son, if we can't get the package we didn't set this aside, I think the folks who set this aside, they...
The package, but remember, inside this budget package are items that cannot be delayed for next month, because it has to do with authorization of this county. You want to...
Don't it, we can't...
As far as the general fund, their piece of funds, and some of their salary line items, as well as other items, purchase, food supplies, that.
Is there any question that you would have on any amendments, Mr. Blevins, I mean specifically, that need to set aside? I was going to apologize that this stuff wasn't included in the packets, and there wasn't...
I have time to vote. I can understand. I will, I will draw my motion, I'll say that. But I will, for me, I understand that if we can't get, I'm going to withdraw my motion, but I will start voting, anything here is out. I say it.
I understand, man. Of course, there was, you know, situation, I think, that might have, things getting in the packet, we'll certainly work on that to get it in there in a more timely fashion than had been included. I can say, at the last budget meeting, there was, I think I've counted, there was probably 13 commissioners, that's counting the committee, you know, five or six additional that did show up to be presented with the same information. Not that everybody has to come, or needs to be in every meeting.
I was here.
Okay, well, maybe there are probably 14 then, I don't know if I counted here or not. So we do apologize for that.
Can I, one more time? Sir, I know that most of the materials are prepared electronically. At the same time, the budget committee, you can all go through the improvement and then read. Mrs. Frye, get a copy of those so that they can be included in this, in that conference.
Absolutely, yes.
I think it'd be very helpful, and for those of us too, the employees, for those of us too, that have attended the budget hearings and listened to, not only outside agencies, but also those within our framework who are fishing our budget, it would be nice to have copies of those as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to be hard, it's get along with it.
I understand.
I've got the cap, and I want to do the better, y'all talk, but I can do it after we can work our best.
Well, I think that's basically the same as the ball, Commissioner. We'd like to have the information prior to us coming in there to make decisions. Commissioner Mike Hill.
Yeah, I will make a statement in support of Mr. Blevins' premise, and I will double down and say that it is entirely appropriate to question everything. At the end of our last meeting for the Health and Welfare Committee, I had, I proselytized or was stoked or whatever on that subject a little bit. This recurring business with stuff not being presented to us in a timely manner to consider before a meeting is beginning to get really, I don't know, it's irritating to me personally. Last month, we had the matter of the retirement program that came before us, and it was, it was put on our desk, and actually, come in, Blevins up here again, for saying that it was, it was voluminous in nature, and that we hadn't had time to study the thing. And when I inquired a couple of weeks after, I voted round seconded to postpone action on that matter, I was told that it would take a few days to get that together, and then I was told that there were, there were a lot of questions about, about that program. And that was on the floor for an up and down vote last month in front of us, and that's dangerous, guys. So I, I will be abstaining from every one of these, because I got this thing around 3:00 this afternoon, came by at 9:00 this morning, tried to pick it up, it wasn't here. It should not be this way.
I'm, well, I mean, to argue that, I'm sure it was available, if you went to the finance department and requested it, or asked somebody in there that they could have got your copy at 9:00 a.m., I would think so. Ms. Cover.
Well, I was, I believe I was having trouble viewing Dr. Acker, but I think you said the same thing. There's really no reason why we couldn't get the amendments that were prepared for the budget committee. We wouldn't have their minutes of how they voted, but we've at least have the information, so don't know if there's any reason why we couldn't have this on a timely fashion.
No, we could provide that, that's sent out to us, and that comes from the finance department, if, you know, need to send that out as it comes out. Yeah, as we get it, we can send it out as well, we just, instead of sending it to eight people on the committee, we can send it to everybody. That way, you know, if you want to show up for that meeting, you're present, and, you know, you can hear about it, and at the least that you're aware of what's coming on the full commission, so we can certainly work on that, and we're sorry that we are in this position.
So the written minutes is the biggest part. You're concerned about, I mean, the amendments that you all submitted in your budget committee, those are kept electronic, if that's not correct. So there's really no reason why that the electronic part should not be in our package by Thursday, when it's delivered, correct?
Electronic, I guess, I mean, if it's not being printed out.
Okay, the only thing other than that, the written part is the only reflection of, as Commissioner Sonner stated, it just shows the vote, really.
That's right, yeah, the minutes would reflect the vote.
The minutes, of course, all of us realize that the person who does this suffered a death of fatal panic, but the, there's somebody, Mr. Clerk, the county clerk, who needs to step in if we have an incident like that again, to pick up on Susan's notice, but finish them out. Is that a problem? Right, okay, we'll discuss about that.
Well, I think we can take responsibility that the amendments, the, you know, budget amendments that we do vote on, they are available at the Monday budget meeting, and probably a few days before, you know, depending on when they're presented or brought up to the finance. So we can, moving forward, be sure that those are included in email to, sent out to the full commission before, you know, any budget meeting takes place.
Okay. And if I, I would continue to, oh, I'm sorry, there, I'm...
Just to comment on that, my office, when we receive them, we prepare them, so we're not taking any blame for this. I mean, I'm not blaming anybody, but we're not taking the blame, because once we get it, we place it on. And I know what you're going to say, Mr. Hill, that bull from Net Trip, I don't even want to get started on them. They've got, you've got a piece in your packet from Net Trip, but the reason I didn't bring anything, because they've not, they've not prepared anything, so that's my comment on Net Trip. And that's what I left out, one meeting, I guess, is I looked it out, but whenever there was something, I would report it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Chairman Garde. Yes, sir. Go ahead. Mr. Hill?
Yeah, that wasn't what I was going to say at all. I was just going to say that matters that we're expected to vote on should be in the research packet timely and not placed, we shouldn't have any matter placed on the desk unless it's an emergency situation, it could not be avoided, and I'm sorry, but it seems like there's an increasing frequency with which we're expected to vote on something that's been slapped on the desk right, right, right before the meeting. That, that's all. I wasn't even bringing up the net, that thing, but thanks for that, Mayor.
Comment, Mike. As far as the resolution that was presented last month, I believe, for the chain of, for it said, when, I discovered in an email that day, and it's a good thing, obviously, it wasn't voted on, because there's still some lingering issues going on there, county attorney has taken up the issue with it. And as far as the budget meetings go, yep, they were presented to the budget committee last Monday, that still does not, excuse the fact that they weren't available in the package last week. We've been following a certain process, and for whatever reason, that process failed this time, it won't happen again. I will email these out on Tuesday, following the budget committee meeting, to all commissioners with the addresses. And please, if you have any questions about any of these or anything else, please call me, go to me.
I'll reiterate that, and Mr. Burke and I, we spoke about that, I think that if you do have questions, maybe come to him and not speak to other commissioners or other folks, wherever, if something needs to be addressed, certainly through his office, to please call him, I mean, he is available.
One more on the call, then, Mr. Blevins. I would, Eric, my opinion on my office, Abby is as good as they get, she does anything she can, so I will pick up for her, I'd rather pick her.
Well, I think we can improve on this mistake. This is not very, much different from what we've done in the past five years that I've been on this commission, that things are received Friday before, depending on when you pick up your packet. I've gone in there, and on Mondays, and there's packets still in there, full commission packets, you know, not just budget stuff. So, I mean, this is something that we all need to work together on, and do the best we can to be informed, certainly. So it won't happen again. And, you know, I respect if you want to abstain from these amendments or, but with that, I'll move forward with the first item, and I'll put the form of motion to approve a refund to a taxpayer who paid a total of property taxes of $2,429.30 on land that she sold back to, to the county, and that refund will be paid from each fund according to the percentage of the $2,000 tax rate.
Second. What by who? Mr. Jackson, any discussion? First, vote.
Okay, and now I'll move on to, to the budget packet, and if you do have that available, I'll start from the very beginning of the, of the packet, I think that is included. Now, that next item, I'll put the form of motion is to approve general fund, one amendment number 10, 21 items for a total of $1,217,964.24, three items, $23,652.92 coming from fund balance, and one item for the general unassigned fund balance for $16,000. And that item is to cover appropriations for county buildings and communications in county, which was underfunded.
Second. Any discussion? Comment? Take none, vote.
Next item, we move to approve solid waste and sanitation fund, one 16, amendment number five, one item of $119,328, one item, $25,805, coming from unassigned fund balance, and this is funds to, for solid waste equipment approvals, to keep the road out of convenience in.
Ms. Cover.
Second. And like to remind you, the one that got 25 was voted on for this year's budget when we applied for the grant.
All right, second. Discussion? No, vote.
I think those bodies have been received, it's about $83,000.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry's. Next item, uh, make a motion to approve Health Department Funds 117, Amendment Number Two, a total of $139,475, and nothing coming from the fund balance.
Second.
Second, vote. Mr. Bray. Any discussion? Seeing none, voting.
Okay, the next item is a motion to approve Drug Control Fund 122, Amendment Number Six, a one item for a total of $517.88. Nothing coming from fund balance, and this is to accept a donation that, that will cover, uh, later. This is appropriate to funds.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Blayton?
Go on.
I'm sorry. Mr. Campbell?
Commissioner Campbell? Any comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion, Gary, Mr. Chairman.
The next item, uh, put the form of motion is to approve Highway Public Works Fund 131, Amendment Number Five, a one item for a total of $169,657, nothing from the balance.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bray. Any questions or comments? If none, vote. Mr. Chair.
Uh, next item, motion to approve General Purpose School Fund 141, Amendment Number Eight, 12 items, a total of $549,841.90. Now, two of those items for $39,670, coming from the General Purpose Fund balance.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bailey. Any discussion?
This is from the schools' balance, correct?
Yes, schools' balance. And nothing from the unassigned, I think that is appropriate.
Any votes? Please vote.
Next item, uh, I'll move to approve Federal Projects Fund 142, Amendment Four, three items, excuse me, for a total of $101,875, nothing coming from fund balance.
Second.
You have a second. Any discussion? Any question?
Trims.
Please vote. Voting, Gary, my thing.
Uh, next item, I'll put the form of motion is to approve the Central Cafeteria Fund 143, Amendment Number Two, two items, total of $1,750,372. Uh, with $372 of that coming from unassigned fund balance.
Second.
Second, vote. Any discussion?
And again, from the school's balance?
Yeah, that is from, from the schools' balance, and that $372 was to, I think, to salary, salary, or not, yeah, salary increase for the director supervisor.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none.
And the next item is, uh, put the form of motion to approve the monetary donations made to the animal shelter for $75, Drug Control Fund, $517.88. The County Schools System, $523.10.
Second.
Second, vote. Any comments? Any discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, please vote. Motion, pass, my thing.
Mr. Kerry's. And the next item is a motion to approve the purchase of two vehicles, a truck and an SUV, for the Planning and Zoning Department, in a total amount not to exceed $55,000. These funds coming in from, uh, revenue received from projects.
Second.
Committee for Prime State. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, please vote. Seventeen, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And next item is a motion to approve a salary increase of $8,679.95 plus benefits totaling $1,916.80 for the Director of Planning and Zoning. This is also coming with the permanent revenue. He will be taking on the title of Economic and Community Development.
Second.
Second.
I would say about Commissioner Collins. Any comments, discussion, questions? Commissioner Bryan's fact?
I just want to go back, I, I did state this during the Budget Committee meetings, uh, I, I think that everybody in county deserves to raise, as far as that goes. But, you know, I, I do think that even though, uh, you know, we're voting on this now, even though the recommendation, the recommendation was passed forward, I do think that this should wait and be passed through with the full budget, uh, that we're currently in the process of doing. I think that, uh, given such a large raise, which we have fought against in the past for so many years, uh, at this point in time, toward the end of years, just a little unordinary, um, since we're so close to the budget and having that conversation. So, I do want to restate that.
And I'll add to that, this was brought forth from, first of all, the planning commission, which received you now, uh, decision on that, and then also, of course, was signed off on by the mayor as well, and full approval from, uh, financial management before it was brought to, to the budget. So, any other questions, Mr. Hill?
Is this, that's a salary raise that we're approving? We're approving a raise for that individual, not a lump sum payment of a grant, just to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would get him up to 53, something like that exactly, but that would be what we would have to fund for.
So, you would be going into the budget process with this individual at that salary level?
Yes.
There's no lump sum payment. This will be an increase on a weekly basis with the weekly paycheck.
To my understanding.
An incremental amount. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Aikah? Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, as a member of the planning commission, you brought this motion forward, and obviously, you advocated it for, for the Budget Committee. I don't think many, many members of our commission realize the amount of work that we have handed to, to the planning department, and particularly to Director. We have handed to him, uh, to rectify all the issues at the animal shelter. Uh, we've got, uh, courthouse security coming forward that he took over from Commissioner Kranstad. He's been working hard on the Folsom House with wind and paint replacement and air conditioning replacement. We've got the 911 build out for EMA, and we have seen what can happen, uh, when a project manager is not involved in a project. We have a $26 million, which we owe right across the street over here on a jail facility, uh, that didn't have a project manager. And I would dare say that the sheriff complains about it every day, and certainly when I have toured within, there are lots of things wrong with that particular building that could have been rectified had we had a project manager. So, I think the, uh, recommendation coming through the planning commission should be one that's, that's upheld. The second thing, economic and community development in this community. Um, I had been on trips, uh, recently around the county with Director Schuler. I think we all know that he was very instrumental, even though it was a partnership between the city and county, but very instrumental in the sale of the Matheson property for the six acres that was acquired for Snap-on, that they are now in the process of expanding and will hopefully bring efficient jobs to this county. Who's very intimately, and stays intimately involved in that project, as well as, um, the resort at Cove Ridge, which is Dan Goodall's project, whether that brings us 500 jobs or not, which I firmly doubt it will not, but if it brings us 100 to 150, that's more than that than we have. And Mr. Schuler has certainly worked effortlessly on that. I was with him just last week in Ken Ross's, um, office in Johnson City, who is the architect. And we have other Johnson City and Washington, and Washington County firms that are involved in that. Uh, so I think it's going to be a big boost for this county, and we owe a lot of that to Mr. Schuler. There are other activities that I won't speak about on the floor this evening because they're still in the works, but there are other opportunities that he's bringing forward. So, I think in looking at the workload that we have laid on, uh, Director Schuler, I think we, we should reconsider this and consider the planning commission motion of, of the $17,500, I think it was, whatever the increase that they brought forward to the budget made, plus the, uh, benefits that go along with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Kerry, go ahead. Mr. Hill, I wasn't saying that I was opposed to giving this raise at all, I don't know if that came off that way before, but I'll just go ahead and put it out there, this individual was marginalized for eight years, and now he is being asked to unstand a lot of damage that was done while he was marginalized for eight years. And I think it would be incumbent on us to raise him up to at least the salary scale of his counterpart at the City of Elizabethan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Hill. Uh, Commissioner Collins?
I'd like to go back to something Dr. Aikah said, uh, as far as a project manager, I don't think we would have the problems at the animal shelter had we had a project manager. So, at least trying to fix the problems that are around, and you have to keep that in mind, a project manager doesn't make a difference.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins. Any votes? Red for motion is for them out, uh, raise for the Director of Planning, is it out?
Uh, that number is the one that came from budget. $8,679.95 salary increase with, uh, plus benefits of $1,916.80.
That is the motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Ms. Collins? She did. All right. Any further discussion? Any other comments? Seeing none, go on, vote. Motion failed.
Motion fails, I would like to commend, uh, Mr. Travis Hill for, he brought this motion forward, the original, of course, was for the 17, and some change on that, and that was his motion, I commend him to do that for my campaign.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to entertain another motion?
Yes, sir, the floor's up for a motion.
I would move that, uh, we increase Director Schuler's salary to the amount of $17,399. That was recommended by the planning commission, it was passed through the county, so it's a 3,000, so it's a $3,921.60.
Have the motion on the floor?
Second.
I have a second, about Commissioner Collins. The floor's not open for discussion, comment, question? Am I clear?
I guess all this is probably my fault, because I put this, put this on, uh, you know, uh, economic development is, is hot right now in Carter County, and, uh, I have to, to someone, he has worked very hard, uh, on several projects, and this is not, not to be in right here, we've got several other things on the line, you know, uh, we have a Dollar Chamber store, L.F.U., we've got another coming, close by, we're just wanting deals, we got, you know, make sure it's done before we talk about it, but, uh, but anyway, I, I take the blame for putting this on, because he's, you know, he's done a great job for me, so that's my comment, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. Any further?
But I'll, I'll add to that, to follow along, I mean, I know Chris, Chris is doing a great job, but he's also has a, a planning office that's still just, just as good a job too. I know Mel's been responsible for, you know, a whole lot of this money coming in, the permits and inspection received, so, uh, we need to thank all of us for that.
Is there any further? Thank pardon, figure was 17, 359.90?
Yes, sir.
Uh, with, uh, benefits of 39, 21, 50?
60.
60?
Yes, sir.
Correction, my correction, 60. All right. There will, there's no further, uh, cast about on the motion. Your next item, Mr. Chair?
Uh, next item, and, let's see, this, this was a grant that's been received through the mayor's office, filed through, uh, this is to appropriate, and it would be $119,802.23, and that money would be distributed to, uh, I'll break it down, to the rescue squad, $72,000 for a rescue truck, Sheriff's Department, uh, $9,500 for drones, and seven fire departments that, or county volunteer fire departments, as well as Bubber. Uh, our county received $5,000 each, and Bubber received $2,500, and that is to appropriate this money to those departments. And I'll put that in form of motion to, to appropriate.
Second. Commissioner Campbell? Any questions? If you meant a bottom down?
I'd like to ask, ask the sheriff, uh, what really the cost is going to be, because there's a bunch of licensing of, uh, the drone, there's likely, uh, repair costs, there's, uh, the person that does the flying, uh, just can't be just anybody. So, what's really the cost rather than $9,500?
That is the cost.
Sheriff?
That is the cost. Everything else we've done prior to, we've scheduled, registered, stationed, they didn't see the license, but you see, it's, it's, so it doesn't, licensed each individual drone, we all licensed, we filed them, so there'll be an additional cost. And as far as operation, uh, the same ones that will be flying this one, or flying the current one that we have, so there'll be an additional cost to everyone.
And these monies will be used for, for emergency equipment for, for each of these departments. Specifically, the rescue squad, you know, for a rescue truck, and a drone for him, and just at the discretion of those volunteer fire departments.
If, if we do have the motion on the floor, if there's any question?
Before we take a vote, uh, that last vote, I need to change mine. I meant to get no, that last vote. We haven't voted again on anything else.
On the vote, on the, the motion, the increase as a wages? That one, we should pick it up?
For the, yes.
I can make a declaration.
Right. Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. Any further? If not, we vote on the motion. It was filed through Grant. Just give it up. One more.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for the work on that. The last thing that I've got is speaking with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Burke a little bit. We'd like to get together before the budget is actually brought forward to the full commission in June. I'd like to set up the time and date for a workshop the week before, so we have our regular budget meeting, and then the Tuesday or Thursday to actually have the commission come in for a workshop. I think that we agreed on the thirty-five dollars for that session.
State minimum amount.
State minimum amount to be present for that and to just sit down and kind of discuss the budget before it's brought to full commission, where, you know, years past, we've lots of discussion, different options we've gone out there. This would kind of be a little more transparent about what we're getting into and going to decide on. So that's, and I'll put that in the form of a motion. I would like to, of course, we can maybe change this, but June, Thursday, June 13th would be the date for that, and we can, you know, six o'clock would be the appropriate time. I haven't looked at any other calendars as far as meetings or committees or anything to see if that would conflict, so.
That way. I have a motion on the chair for the budget, and I have a second by Commissioner Boyer. Is there any discussion, questions? Is there a call? Is everybody clear on the motion? Especially for the chairwoman of the committee, which is a really important. We're going to pay you now, come and look at the numbers. So you don't get injured in June and it turn into a dog and pony show. If you have concerns about anything in the budget, this is where you bring it that way in June. When we adopt the budget, everybody is on the same page. Okay, we had the motion for the June workshop, the budget, and the finance director will be the instructors on it, be on Thursday, the 13th, at 6:00 P.M. here at the courthouse. Any further?
Dr. Aikov brought this up. We will get to it as everything comes in, as far as the numbers we're getting and the schedule and stuff, to present those or send those out to you guys, so you're aware of that. But we should have that package all made up for the meeting as well, we can get that out in advance.
Okay. Any further? Say nothing, vote on the motion. Motion carried. Mr. Chair. It's all right, sir. Before we go any further, the chair is going to call for a break. We will reconvene at 7:30 tomorrow, 15:00 in progress. That was one item that we overlooked on the budget committee. Chairman Coler, if you will, go ahead and present it.
Yeah, overlooked, we did. We discussed this at the budget meeting Monday. It's a contract for the highway department. They're building some engineering services for, I think it's River View Road in Valley Forge in the Blood King Field. I think they did a lot of damage to that, and that's money that I think we'll be getting back, I think, quite a bit of that, right?
At least seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent. But this is a contract to move forward with Mary and Craig to, I think, engineering services, detailed according papers, amount to approximately ninety-two thousand. And I think there's a couple of different tasks, one through three, sixty-two thousand, and then task four is thirty thousand. They, he needs this approved, and I'll put it in the form of a motion to approve this contract with Mary and Craig.
The second, Commissioner Brown, any comments, questions? One item, you said this is seventy-five, seventy-five percent.
Yeah, seventy-five percent.
Okay, how much does the twenty-five equal to? Close to, it doesn't have to be exact, and if it does, about a quarter of the money comes from, let's get it.
Well, let me say that, too, we did cover that in our budget amendment on his line. That was, that money was actually appropriated, that's right, wasn't it, Brad? Because it went up to like sixty-five something. Yeah, from hot mix or asphalt or something like that. So it was, I don't guess it's new money.
Engineering services are sixty-seven thousand, six fifty-seven, which includes sixty thousand, sixty-two thousand, plus sixty-sixty-seven.
Yeah. And I think in the thirty, we'll address in the future, is that right?
Twenty-two thousand will be for engineering folks who have been in the place.
Okay.
Fifty-sixty-two thousand, and what you've been voting already voted on the night.
Yes. Yeah, so I mean, the money was, we already voted on it through the budget amendment for, is this is just to approve the contract.
Okay. I didn't want to get, go back and get caught. If we ran into the first Tennessee Development District, a lot of EMS building, we're just hurriedly vote for it, not knowing where the additional funds were coming from, or is it?
Yes, yes, sir, I understand that.
Commissioner Hill?
I believe this is based, I mean, half the roads fell off on the cliff, basically, and everybody somehow lost that, correct?
Yeah, the road is closed right now, isn't it?
The road is closed. We are going to have to make a probably a tieback for changes while once we determine how far we have to go down to do that for the foundation that the Alzada were on. That's the reason why you have an engineering firm to get it. And of course, they don't only work up to what needs to be done, they also, under this same contract, work up the pay items and put it out for bids with the help of the financial office. And see the job done through the end of it, to its ultimate goal. They will produce us and then paperwork to turn in, the FEMA to get our reimbursement back.
Yeah, my concern was not the process of the contract, I just said the matching funds that you give the contractor, where is it coming from?
The funds for this is coming through our engineering services line item, which is, which you voted to take it out of our sixty-two thousand, four oh four, which is hot asphalt, because as our current budget.
I believe, Frasier?
Just two things on it. It is contingent on that being declared a natural disaster, I do believe. That's where the funds, that's where the funds would come back in to fill in the holes. We're essentially, I think, already putting out the initial fund, so it would just be a reimbursement of about seventy-five.
From FEMA.
Correct.
Part two.
Yeah, and part two of it is, is I'm, is, was this one for reading socks? This was, they were not the engineering firms, correct?
Mary, Mary.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Hill?
I just want, and I believe Mr. Colbaugh said that they're going to do the assessments or something after the state and county's money. Did you see that was part of your job before with the state? Yes, we can do some of the inspection during the construction through me and one other person at the, at our office. I would like to say also, though, now, this is the engineering. After this, we let it contract, it may cost three to five hundred thousand dollars to repair this. If it does, it will have to come out of the highway department's fund balance. And hopefully, if the feds come through, we will get our seventy-five percent back on that. So we will be back to you when we get a contractor with a price to vote on getting the, getting the money out of the fund balance.
Right. Thank you. Sir, any further questions? Say nothing, the motion on the floor, contract, go ahead and vote. Motion passed. Mr. Chair. Next one I want to recognize is the clerk of master, Mr. Melissa Moore, for representation of courthouse security committee, has to deal with grant that's been received.
Everyone knows that we received fifty-two thousand dollars back the first of the year for the court security grant. We went back and reapplied, and we received eighty-nine more hundred dollars to go with the money that we got off the board. So we will have to go back to the budget committee next month to give a ten percent match for the court security grant. We just wanted to let everyone know that we've got a little bit more money.
How much concern is that?
Thank you for the time, Professor.
Next, bill of the grounds. Anything other than what's in your meeting?
None.
All right. Thank you. Education.
School board being approached here tonight, and Dr. Bird, do you have anything you want to say about?
The first.
Just that, we're, we're at the budget process, and this is sort of kind of down to the wire for departments and department heads and the school system. As of last Thursday, we have balanced the school system's budget, which went without some pretty tough cuts. Now, you know, as we have found out, of course, just today, Mr. Burke and I have spoken, we got our first estimate on our April WEP, and surprisingly enough, and, you know, it was a great surprise that we did get a little bit extra that we wouldn't expect. Now, that's first estimate. That could dissolve between now and the final estimate, which is in June. So we got May and June to go. So what we'll be doing as we go into the board meeting tomorrow night, Mr. Burke working his numbers to find out exactly how much more is, that we will be able to look at shortening up line items or working something else with, which will be something the board will have to decide. So that was a great piece of news, and, you know, we got, Mr. Burke, anything to say about that? I think more specifics will be given tomorrow night as we want to give the board, I did even go to board this morning, let them know that the people estimate had come in a little higher than what we had estimated and plugged into the budget. Any questions? We happy to answer them. We try to get an answer for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Thank you.
So as far as quick announcements, the board meeting is tomorrow. We have it at our central office at 5:30. If you're interested in coming out on that. We are still doing the school tours. If anyone's interested in that, I will try to make sure this time that the date goes out to everybody if they're interested in going with us. I apologize if that didn't go out. Those would be definitely to go. And I wanted to point out that on the field, lost my place there, sorry. One of the things, the capital, the half cent sales tax projects is going to be going to regroup Valley Forge Elementary, Hampton, and Cloudville Hospital. So rest is in your notes.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee. Health and welfare, Mr. Dr. McGee.
I'll speak from your perspective. Really nothing for health and welfare this month, with the exception of thanking not only members of health and welfare, but also commissioners who attended many of the insurance meetings over the past several months, and had input into financial management and for picking the current rubber support. Appreciate it for you all for doing it.
Thank you, Commissioner McGee.
I've got a fear of my song because it is cold in here. We do not have a minutes in your packet because of a death in the family of Susie. Therefore, there are no minutes made. But I will say this, that we had a room full of people for the second month in a row concerning flooding on Gap Creek was one. Buffalo Creek flooding was another. Nothing much was mentioned about Stinking Creek because there was very little housing that's a throw enough on Stinking Creek to cause problems. The budget committee will meet on the 29th, I think.
Roger.
So the committee members, I hope they should be there if possible. We had a situation on Patton Simmons Road where a driveway, and I guess I should have asked planning why they had turned down the access that the individual wanted. But we voted on the basis of the fact that, that you couldn't keep a person from accessing a county road. You probably could access, cause them to not access if it was in a totally wrong place. But we believe we made the right decision. The superintendent has been extremely busy. We want, we were going to present quite a few photos to the budget committee coming up because we've had several disasters. Big time. We believe that Gap Creek probably is, is in pretty good shape. Commissioner Coler, would you comment on where we stand with the Gap Creek situation?
Well, there's been quite a bit of work done, but there's still quite a bit to be done on the creek beds and the bridges and continual flooding.
In the case of Buffalo, we have seriously heavy problems on water lane. But that wasn't necessarily created from the flood. This is created from the fact that over the years, houses were added on water lane, and there was never a ditch line, never a ditch on either side of the creek coming to the creek. Therefore, to correct the problem that's there now will require driveway cuts, possibly moving water meters, and in defense of planning, most of this was done before planning was in existence. Therefore, if you build a house anywhere in this county, put a driveway tile under the driveway, even if there's no ditch, because someday they may need to be one. And this is going to cost a lot of money. I feel somewhat guilty about this one because... I feel somewhat guilty about this one because it's going to take a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars possibly to correct this problem. And I see all kinds of places in this county, all kinds of places in this county, that that a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand dollars could be utilized much, much better. Not much better, but could be utilized. The people are organized as a group and they're going to get some action. What is they say about the screwing wheel? And they are screwy. What do you do? You correct the problem if you can. I do think that, uh, a T-Berry road situation coming up, the sheriff needs to be in the next meeting on May the second. Naturally, the superintendent will be there on May the second. Uh, these people have a problem, not of their own making. Uh, we just had one on Levens Road, seventeen tires. The next day, X number of tires up on, uh, the Oregon movie place on Ninety-one. That happened to be in the city though, because city annex, strip annex stalled away at the top of the hill. So the county may or may not have been involved. Uh, I personally, uh, have paid for trash being removed from my business, twenty-six tires at two dollars a piece is not a big deal in a way. It is, it is in the bottom line. Uh, a few days, a few nights ago, load of shingles. The nails are the problem, not necessarily the shingles, but they're, uh, if you don't pick those things up the first night or two, there will be another load right on top of it. That's what I found. That's what I found. I don't know what you do, uh, one time, and let me, please give me a minute. I know the last time I had a problem. We found a H&R Block folder along with the trash out, the trunk of a car, obviously, beer cans, a few incidentals of that sort. And the H&R Block, this was in late April last year, the guy had just filed his income tax and stupidly threw out his H&R Block folder. It had his name, it had where he worked, it had what he made. It had the whole shooting match. Guess what? Zero. That came up because I didn't see it. Well, let's, uh, put some eyes on that drone and, uh, or at least some surveillance cameras. That's something we've got to do to catch some of these people. And if you don't, you're going to have T-Berry once or twice a year, you're going to have crossbound road, right now refrigerators, uh, stoves, whatever you, whatever they can throw out because they're easy. Stinking Creek, even. We got eighty-six tires out of that creek ten years ago because it sits right along the highway. All you do is toss them over and several hundred feet, several hundred feet of guttering. Obviously, the contract. I don't know, uh, what the answer is. Jim Jordan doesn't know what the answer is, but he's trying. He's trying and we've got to help him. I've never seen anybody throwing things out. If I had, I would certainly have tried to get a license number. Thank you. And Sheriff, comment.
Yes, Mr. Hartman, would you please tell a couple of these people whether or not I am allowed to stay on inmate labor on private property under any circumstances?
Uh, by the way, the, uh, you had the H&R Black Packet, Commissioner Kennedy, in the city. Commissioner Kennedy? We have. City, city in the next roster.
We have a question on the floor. Go ahead and make your statement, Sheriff.
I just want to, I just want to kind of turn the question over. Uh, you know, I've got the station right here in my pocket of whether or not I can allow inmates to work on private property under any circumstances?
He was on America phone, sir, so if you're.
He's asking me a question.
What is the record to him?
He, he asked me, uh.
Yes, sir.
The, the answer is no by, by state law.
Thank you.
That the sheriff cannot authorize inmates to work for benefit of any law on private property. That's what the law says in American law.
Not only that, state employees are not allowed to do law or work on private property. Federal employees are not allowed to. Commissioner McCarthy?
Let me say this, I know, uh, T-Dot, if you actually see somebody, somebody in front of you on, I think it has to be a state highway interstate system, something like that, if you see them throwing something out, you can take their tag number, they have an office line, or, you know, where you can contact them and they will notify that individual that they were spotted.
We have, takes the laws, uh, government letter. There is also one in there that used several times myself as the laws are, is there is one of them, but even the person who takes the affidavit is given, I'm going to say, hey, reward for reporting it by law if they found guilty. Uh, myself, I've found people on the side of the road dumping their sewer on the side of the road from their travel trailers for their vacations. Drone tech hits, we mark tires at nighttime so when we go in mountain, sorry, it's like Walnut Mountain and Buck Mountain and Laurel Fort and I run into tires caught that marked, I know where it come from. There are several things that are active in their day, it's just that, you know, it takes time. Now, the, the issue of our, uh, on the road in enrollment, I mean, I don't know how many times it's cleaned the dirt off these small granules, there's many times it's been graded and cleaned up. And that needs to be a little bit more permanency and what we get done. It is a nice order and I hope that, uh, that you will join in and help us to curb that for the community and the people that live up around there. Landfill?
I just sent the minutes reflect everything. Be sure and read them. He's doing a wonderful job. And if I may, the same thing on the animal shelter, be sure and read the minutes and I'll let Mr. Hughes give a report on the jail department where he does his planning report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Culler. Law enforcement, Mr. Prophet.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have to present.
Thank you, Mr. Prophet. Commissioner Woodby nominated.
I just left Santa Maria's sample, um, nominating voted to reappoint Debbie Sands to Equalization Board, Board, I'll make a motion, um, for that.
I'll make a motion.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? If not, please raise your hand.
Ms. Woodby, she, that was just like a reappointment for her, wasn't it?
Yes.
You know what, Mr. She represents her, where she's.
I'm not sure what, and she's, she's going to be over in somewhere. Yeah, I'm not sure what he knows.
Motion, Garrett, Mr. Trump, twenty yes. You have a vote. Motion, Garrett, twenty five. Thank you. Rules and bylaws, the famous, Commissioner Jim.
The minutes reflect, I mean, Parks and Rec, uh, Mr. Harold filled in for me. Uh, I would assume the minutes reflect there, so.
Any of the items on your agenda that are the right side, such as your board of health, park management, service board, equalization board, library liaison, industrial development, park recreation, planning commission, the record commission, any of the representatives who want to speak are having to think of the importance of our motion. Break, floor.
I'm giving you a round out, Mr. Chairman, on, uh, the round we're standing now. Director Schubert. On the EDCM, uh, by, by dog this time, uh, we've had a representation from a local industry that's wanting to expand and we're working on that this time. Uh, we also have a new business that's moved into Carter County here in our industrial park, uh, and that's brought in about thirty jobs right now. By the time it's said and done, it should be about a hundred fifty, some of the tech, uh, work. Uh, staff on still moving forward, land already grown for the new expansion, uh, finishing up some, uh, geotechnical work, seeing how they're going to grow the area, which is pretty simple as far as that. Carter County Animal and Lisbon Animal Shelter, uh, finishing up the HBAC. When we were doing the tear out, we found one electrical panel that was far out also. Once again, we missed that bullet twice. Thank God, uh, the building didn't go to the ground and, uh, now you can actually access things that are added and, uh, everything's working out good. I want to clarify something that I clarified in buildings and grounds. It's first thing, initial building did have the project manager. Project manager left right at the very end of the project. Since then, you've had additions put on there and need your decisions that people made that adds more and more things into the structure. And like I told the building grounds, I'm not here to throw a knife at anybody's back. God knows if anybody should, it should be me, but I'm not going to throw somebody a knife in their back or on their leg. I wouldn't use exact facts, figures, and exactly what went on. With that said, right now, we're looking at, uh, finishing up probably at the end of next week with our HBAC units. Seems to be working well, we have it now. We were lucky, we didn't burn it up. Uh, there won't be the, uh, urine on your spell coming through there now and things of that nature. Folsom House will be over there. It and the courthouse, single entry, single point entry, and then also the addition of the fire door, fire escape on, uh, Ms. Moore's office. None of this, again, spoke to the historical district. I got approval tonight, I have a couple pieces of paperwork to fill out. Mr. Hartman will come in need, but, uh, that, that went through pipe, so I was representing you all, that's why I was late this meeting. And, uh, one additional thing with Folsom House is there is a structural situation and as soon as we can get in to manipulate that, we'll fix that and that will open up about three hundred and forty square feet upstairs that's not being utilized this time because of the structural situation.
The structural is due to the site in the center by, I think they better move or?
They were moved when they put the HBAC system and then the logs and the ends and none there. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Campbell.
On the resort nearby.
Yes.
Are you the one that takes care of the sewer part of this or, or waste or the problems?
No, the sewer is handled by Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation and they have an engineer that's actually, well, actually an engineer, two engineering department working on it at this time, sir.
While I'm still building, catching four kids in and watching this, is that true?
Yeah, you can't discharge anything unless it's, it's here, here, water.
We don't get it right now.
Pardon?
We don't get it right now, like, or?
No, no, it's bad enough where it is at.
We'll have a workshop on that if something comes up, you got a plan on that?
Uh, we already went through the planning commission for concep-, uh, conceptual design. Uh, we did a conceptual design for the, the small part of the hotel and then the, uh, the restaurant portion.
You get it, sir.
We got them in our office whenever you want, just come on by. I can give you a big center, a little center, whichever one you want. Any further questions? Yes, sir.
What is this, what kind of type of period of this hotel? Getting, I don't know, are you using, are you?
I can't foresee anything right at this present moment. There's, you know, developers, I think they're around some, developing some things so you know that developers.
Oh, yeah.
Big enough. Yes. Any other questions? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Director Schubert. Anyone else go to prior capitol or is there anything else they'd like to say? Being that, the next item on our agenda is a county attorney report.
Yes, sir. As usual, I'll submit the written summary that will be included in the minutes, so I'll have that to look at. I will specifically talk about some litigation that was filed this month. Of course, it processes been filed in federal court, uh, gentleman, Charles Carr, has sued twenty-one people, uh, among them a former chancellor and secretary master, uh, for some, uh, allegations, uh, which I feel are meritless, but anyway, he's filed this claim in federal court and he's filed it under, uh, indigency, so it hasn't been processed through research yet and it is, it'll be turned over to our hearing. Uh, other than that, uh, nothing new in litigation this month, other than the continued work on the, the litter violations, which are still in the process. Uh, the rest of this, uh, will be in the minutes and I'll answer your questions.
Any questions, comments? Being that at this time, we will have a period of time for commissioners' comments. Commissioner Blount?
To start with, I don't think nobody, I don't, this whole picture is done. I don't think we're done. Don't like to be in city league somewhat that I have done. Not smart, ain't the world when I'm locked up. And, uh, since I'm on the board here, we're in September, about every, there's clearly a couple in here that talk about us and don't stop us. If he's not too smart, not good, why don't he run for office? You know, let's, you need to do something. You know, it's just, uh, yeah, we've got an attorney, I'll be in it, attorney. Now, I'll speak my mind, I don't care who runs it and I don't care who does it. But the Carter County Attorney, we've got a good county attorney. We've got a good sheriff. And I stand and say I'm proud of the sheriff who picked it out here to this county picture. And I'm proud of my county. I'm well proud of the county that I live in. And I take it as an answer to be called done.
Thank you, Mr. Blount. Mr. Bailey?
I'd like to put the form of motion that from here on, uh, send to building, to, uh, rules and bylaws, that we look at stuff for two readings.
I'll show you that, if you got the motion. Doesn't matter if you got the motion right before.
Can I affirm that we're, we're just looking at?
Will you confirm, will you restate?
I would like to make a motion to send it to rules and bylaws to look at having two readings.
Having two?
Two readings. And when we bring this up, it goes through the committee twice. That way, everybody knows what's going on, they miss it, they'll have an opportunity to know what's going on.
Do you want to elaborate in your motion, whether it's just for resolutions, or is that for anything common, the general of the votes?
That will be determined by the committee and then let everybody back to us.
So more or less you want to build?
I will, we'll get something here, some guidelines for us to get this for two readings.
Now, if I read this from wrong, Mr. Bailey, this motion is, uh, to refer to the rules and bylaws formally and to make recommendations of rules governing, uh, second readings on legislation through this commission. Does that sound wrong to you?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
You've got a second, ladies.
I have a second, about Commissioner Blount. Uh, Commissioner Culler?
Yes, in the discussion, uh, I would like to ask rules and bylaws to be sure to go back and pick up the minutes from September two thousand fourteen for the problems that occurred during this process at that time.
I have to.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
That's why I wanted to send it to the committee, let's work out the paralysis.
Is I'm going back through the whole entire meeting? No, no, she is referencing to a prior meeting involving this same topic back in the, in the year fourteen. Any further? Uh, Ms., uh? Any further, Ms., Commissioner Kennedy?
I just want to point out once again, I'm not exactly sure whether we can go with this, but we need to consider animal control. We need to look at that and we need to remake it that.
Okay, if you will present that, as follows, we have a motion on the floor and a second. As soon as we complete that vote, I'll let you bring after the floor your comment. If it doesn't relate to the motion, I have to walk. All right, thank you. Anything else, latest comments? If not, we can place the vote on the motion. Motion placed, Chairman of the Rules and Bylaws, do you know the motion?
Yeah, I think I've got it.
Okay, just want to make sure you're clarifying when you get your next move. All right, Commissioner Kennedy, you will restate what you do for our interlocutor.
I just want to point out that we need to look at animal control being brought away from the sheriff's department and back into the animal shelter. They need their own animal control. And I'm not exactly sure, being the new commissioner, how to go about making that happen, but I ask and we can't get clarification, so I just want to put that out on the floor that I am not pleased with the dog that's being done. I know there's several things that are happening out here, we've got dead puppies, we've got dogs being given back that are infested, probably with a flea holly, dogs that are missing that nobody can find, and I know everybody here knows that I don't have to speak for months about, everybody knows I'm passionate about the animals and I'm not happy with how animal control is being. So, we've got to look at it and I don't know who looks at it, but it's got to be looked at, it's got to be revamped, somebody that cares about animals needs to be in control.
Has this been addressed to the board of the animal shelter?
I've spoken to several board members.
Pardon?
I have spoken to several board members.
Right, they've placed it in their agenda for discussion, for action, for recommendations because it is two agencies, it's two governments, city and county both, and they're joined. So, take a single action without our knowledge, you know, it's like a big problem. Would you bring it forward, Lord? I mean, I mean.
I would be glad to. Like I said, it's put it on several occasions to several board members.
Okay, they take it as Lord has, gives us a little bit of authority. That is the bottom, it's transparent, some of the background.
So, it has to go through the board?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Garner?
Couple things, should have mentioned in the budget for my time out there. The next hearing will be this coming Monday, April twenty-second, to hear from the sheriff's department. The following one would be next Monday, the twenty-ninth. One of the mention of those two days certainly helps to everyone. Second thing, what is the plan of action at T Berry Road? I know we've talked about it and I mean, I don't think anything's fair of what can be done or what plans can be done, honestly.
Mr. Hill?
The plan at this time is to, the Forbes family, who own both sides of that road, have requested that the piece of road that bisects their property be abandoned by the county and that, I guess, donated, reattached, whatever happens when we un-adopt a section of road, so that they can gate that off and control their own destiny again. I've compiled the addresses of all the residents up here, contacted the rescue squad, basically built this case, four years on the highway committee, I know how this goes or whatever. We're planning to bring it in, I guess on May the second, to see if we can advance this to a public here and then have that done in June.
Next meeting, if May is like that, then we anticipate naturally taking this up.
Yeah, and then after, if successful, after the road is shut down to through traffic, it would still remain a county road under the current plan that's being developed on both ends. It wouldn't block anyone's ingress, ingress in any way, they just would have only one option to go out because gate or chain or whatever. Mr. Ed Jordan has contacted me and has pledged the support of Keep Carter County Beautiful to try to help us mount a volunteer effort of some sort. Mr. Lyons at the landfill has offered to provide roll-off tubs at no charge to such cleanup ever, and I'm not going into the part about the inmate detail. We've been dealing with T Berry, as chairman of the highway committee, I went up to T Berry, I got calls about T Berry at least once or twice a year, and every time I got the call, I called the sheriff's office and asked to schedule an inmate detail and the sheriff was good as gold to go through there and clean up the county right away, which is as much as he can do. So, anyway, that's basically as far in as we've gotten. I don't know if this will work, but we certainly haven't tried it yet and we've tried a few other things up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaughn?
As chairman of the highway committee, three people have supported the election on this, three commissioners from their, please come, very committee members for the added of school bus rack, post office rack. Well, that's inconvenient to people, inconvenience to people having to go each direction if you shut down the middle of the road. As a landowner, this is common, common, common. What do you do? You clean it up, somebody has to clean it up. I've been fortunate in that I clean up my trash the first day, if I don't, the next night. And I'm talking about couches, I'm talking about everything that you deal with and leave. So, come prepared with the possibilities, knowing that by law, the sheriff, the sheriff can't go on private property to clean it, neither can the road tripper do it. Theoretically, a person went up there to volunteer. I picked up a bag of trash off the highway, two needles, and I got both of them. What I did was I opened the bag, found the address, and I immediately went to that person that said, in essence, "What are you doing?" He said, "I'm diabetic," and I said, "Thank God you're diabetic because I'm not," whatever. Question?
Well, is this going to affect any of the ratings for the fire department or anything like that for those folks up there? Because I mean, if you cut off the road in the middle, are they going to have to take a bigger loop around? I talked to EMS, they said there weren't any conflicts. I haven't gotten the run-in involved to find a partner yet. I did talk to the school bus garage, one short bus runs through there and rerouting the bus would add about twenty minutes to the route total. Don't know what else. I actually had a parent to contact me and say that they really didn't appreciate their child being driven through the conditions on T Berry. So, I mean, there's a lot to consider here, but something needs to be done to give these folks some relief. The Forbeses have told me that they have cleaned this up at their expense repeatedly. Couple times a year, they'll shovel it up, they're in the construction business, they pick it up and haul it off. And within a week, it's back just about as bad as it was prior. Mr. Anderson at the community park was laughing because I made the statement that after our visit with the Forbeses last Saturday, that it was better than I had seen it at some points in time. And he said, "You're a naturalized citizen now," because you actually said, "I've seen it worse." But I mean, even though it's better, it's not good, you know, there's no distinction there, it's a terrible situation.
The rest of the problem, it's not about the trash, it's the dead animals that they found up there, more problems, more potential problems. It looks like there's fifteen or sixteen people that died along this road. It's that many more families, there's fifteen or sixteen.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. We put up trail cams, they stole the cameras.
But I'm very sorry, yes, I was anxious, yes.
And we are in the process of placing, we're charging on more dogs, there's more to it than just shooting up.
Well, what about the tide and how weird, can you not trace that? Through a livestock market?
I don't know, but then why? See, you have to prove, you have to prove that that person, you take a warrant out, you don't go take a warrant out on a tag or on a number, you take a warrant out on an individual, you have to be able to prove that that individual dumped that trash there.
But couldn't you go back on the owner, that owned the cab?
No, you have to prove he did it. You have to prove that he dumped it.
We have to actually catch him in the act, that's the, that's the.
You know, I have, when you take a, when you take the son as a reward out of someone, you have to be able to swear that Nancy Brown did that act.
Doggone it, Nancy, would you quit?
You understand what I'm saying? You have, you have to be able to state your facts in that act, in that affidavit, that person dumped that animal there.
He could have asked somebody to bring it, I'd take it for a damn.
That happens, I take somebody to call my garbage off, they take it and dump it.
It's a matter of accumulating a chain of evidence so you can sit and examine. You got a letter on the name of it, start your investigation, see if you can get to the end of the fourth letter, who took it out, who was the license in custody? Mrs. Brown?
Well, are you twelve and it's really good, right there?
Yes, the best we can have is.
Which is not, they got three guys on the road, you got three, three guys on the road.
They are up there. I assure you, proper right hand, there's an officer on that, I can't assign one officer to patrol T Berry until we put out a date on that.
And there you have it.
Well, I tell you what, last Friday was a nice awakening.
People that are eager are just as important, you know.
Last Friday, last Friday was a nice awakening. I can tell you, we had four state troopers, two county cops and a constable. Row Mountain didn't know what was going on, but we was all people to see them.
All right, Commissioner Vaughn?
Mr. Trump, as, when I was the police chief of Madison City, we, well, I got looking at plant for the city, but this could be adapted to county easily. I don't know how many families are on T Berry, can you kind of give me an approximate number?
She was still here, was it six residents or something?
Six, seven, eight.
Well, this, there's nothing up here.
This plant probably would not be peaceful with only six families, but neighborhood watch would throw in for discussion there, but it was not just a normal neighborhood watch. People were going to be equipped with cameras or phones which they could actually take pictures of if they did catch an individual or individuals in the process of litter, to whereas they could definitely put someone as a felon and they could proceed to have that person arrested, they would take a little bit, not a whole lot of training, it's hardly goes as what to look for and how to proceed with whatever they can obtain. But in the event, if those families, if we could get together and we could set up some kind of program, I know the county sheriff's department has not got really that much manpower to just control one area for these violators, but if we could set up somehow to maybe multiple families, not necessarily this T Berry, but in that area, that could be kind of watching for people dumping so they could process what evidence they could obtain and set up systems where they could obtain evidence, maybe knock this in the head. I don't know what committee that, maybe be a law, might, as far as that goes, that we could get some plan together to where they probably.
That may be the start, Commissioner Vaughn.
Sir?
Your, that, take it, your committee may be the start of it.
Yes, sir.
May want to look into it, see where it goes. It may get back to go to another.
Yes, sir.
Ms., Commissioner Renn?
Yes, we have Miss Woodby back there that has took pictures, she's documented, she's done everything she can do and literally, anybody that goes on that road, she follows. She's amazing and I thank you for all you're doing.
Then it can be fixed, it's already set. You take those pictures and you go to the car's office and you identify the individual and you take a criminal summons out. That's the process. By statute, you're state of Tennessee and United States of America, you the person that sees that violation, you don't have to have a police officer. You're a citizen of his country, you can take a summons out for someone that commits misdemeanor, if you see it. I can't have it on what you see, you can tell me that Tom Smith felt like crashing my yard. I feel good, Tom Smith charged him, he paid the fine, he's cool, that's not the way of the state or worse. Do you see it? You come down to see me, I'll take you over to the sheriff's office and give you maybe a summons out. Do you have to?
Well, I can't stop her, I'll come. I mean, I'm up there many times a day, I know, this Monday, Monday, last time I was there, the first time, and I spend over an hour each time up there. You know, so I'm like, every day, I was at home, I lived there, I was at home. And I can't catch people when I'm asleep, and I'm asleep, you know? But I know I could treat some people from dumping up there, from just.
Bring him over here, come and see.
You know, but I can't, I can't do it all.
Thank you, Miss Woodby. Commissioner Campbell?
You know, I'd like to see this problem solved too, and I think the jury is pretty well on the right track too, you know, getting neighborhood watch in there. We're talking something that's been going on, I like to say, it's been going on for over forty years. You know, it's just like something that's happened overnight and everybody's been concerned about it. Also, we've got an eight-foot road going into the, is that right, Roger? It's about an eight-foot road. How you gonna get people turned around up there and get them headed back out and without having accidents on that road? And if there's a fire in there and the fire trucks do have to get side to side bumping most of the time, how you gonna do it? You can't do it. We don't see no life loss period, but you know, if you get wrecks in there, then somebody's gonna be responsible, it's either gonna be the county for that county road and to the nerve and then sideswiped by another vehicle. It's more to consider than just saying, you know, close that road down.
Mr. Cullors?
Why don't we make a move on? Probably make a move on.
Any other, Mr. Cullors? Yes, sir.
First of all, I just want to say that I'm sorry from the financial management committee that you did receive documents late last month. I'm also sorry for oversight and not looking at the Kyrie situation, but I would also like to say that the delay in having this matter finalized is not the fault of anybody in this county government, it is the fault of nationwide. When you try to take a million dollar investment from someone, they get a little unhappy. So, please know that we appreciate, well, listen, Moreland bringing this to our attention, please know that we are working on it diligently. I also want to say thank you for the faith we placed in the financial management committee tonight by voting in support. It was a very easy decision for me as the proceedings went along, there's no one that compared to the personal touch and the passion that they put on it. And I believe that there's a great possibility that we will not only see a zero percent increase, that there's a possibility we're going to see a negative number this year, that is our hope. I would also like to address, Mr. Livingston's calling out. He may not have chosen his words very well, it may kind of cross his pensive, but I have to say that last month was not a proud moment in my eyes for the Carter County Commission and others in this room. There were many times that we did ask, what are we voting on now, et cetera. We did not look our best, our budget numbers didn't add up correctly, we did not look our best. So, I would just like to encourage us all to do a really good job of listening when we're in here, be ready, let's put our best face forward for the people of this county. You all are good people and our county is full of good citizens and I want us to do our best work all the time. I feel like we've had a really good lead tonight, I have not seen any of the problems that I saw last month. Lastly, I would like to say that though I voted no to Mr. Schuler's seventeen thousand dollar increase, I support that measure. There's a saying that my daddy taught me, that the only way you can get nothing, the only way you can get something for nothing is if someone is getting nothing for something. We asked Mr. Schuler to increase his job responsibilities and tonight, we voted. We asked Mr. Schuler to increase his job responsibilities and tonight we voted to give him nothing for that. He is getting nothing for something. And I was raised differently than that. Uh, so, I would go along with Isaiah Groundstaff and say that, as we continue with our budget process, let's please reconsider that. Uh, let's put it through the proper channels, but let's please reconsider that. You cannot put a price on years of relationships and networking that this man has performed. There is no money that is worth relationships, because it is those relationships that bring about progress. And I want to thank him for all that he's doing for us. And thank you all for this time to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn. Any further, uh, Michael, Commissioner, you can come in anytime.
I just wanted to bring an update from our district from the mountain, because, uh, what? Anyway, uh, we're in more than Teaberry, okay? Uh, today I got news from, uh, the trend magazine that Bob's Dairy Land up in Run Mountain was, uh, was, just won the, uh, best restaurant on the Appalachian Trail, best hiker grub on the Appalachian Trail. They received it at number 27 and they kicked butt all the way through the brackets, took down a, a, a soul food joint of some sort up in Damascus, and I'm real proud of them. Uh, and the timing of that is awesome, because I'd like to let everyone know that on the Fourth of May, we will be having Hiker Palooza from the community park all the way to the state line. Uh, our headliner band is going to be the Twang Bangers Regionally Popular Act, uh, John Paul Mathis II, Finland Liotta, uh, this Billy Crawford Band that's coming in, plus best, best trail beard, uh, hiker jeopardy trivia, uh, cornhole tournament, frisbee golf on the frisbee golf course up there, and, uh, the girls with wieners are going to serve hot dogs again this year, uh, that's, they're the ladies. And, uh, they had t-shirts made, it's, it's their name, not mine. Uh, we, we, we love our community up there, and so I'd like to invite everybody to come on down, most of this stuff is free, there will be some ticket evidence. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nobody will, they're playing right with their hot dog. Any other t-shirts, my expectations, they're ahead.
You know, if I didn't help her, I'd think we were six months ago. You stand up here quite often. Oh, thank you, I wanted to make sure that Teaberry was finished, earlier was why I said we were finished. At this point, I would like to remind you that Mr. Schuler made a comment about adding additions to the animal shelter. We have, uh, made additions to the dog runs, we've made additions to the cat rooms, we have made additions to the employees. Uh, and this is a, this may hurt the sheriff, but the trustees, you know, we don't have trustees, so we're increasing our space, but we're not increasing the people that's taking care of this. So, you need to keep that in mind when we come to the budget committee. And the same thing is this animal patrol that Mr. Kennedy mentions, uh, that's going to bring forth more money, please go to animal shelter. I don't know what the problem is, I haven't heard about it, but, uh, remember, when you add more to it, you need to add more people, and we definitely need more people.
Thank you, Commissioner Cullors. Any further? Any other comments by Commissioner? If none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, we are.